May 30th, 2017. Members present are Diana Rio.
Present.
Steven Rojas. Myself, Joe Paz. Also excused is Hiberto Gonzalez, Eugenio Gonzalez, and Álvaro LoRito. Also present is Mr. Juan Pena, Planning and Zoning Director, and José Villalobos, City Attorney. And it is 7:35 PM for the record. Mr. Pena?
Good evening. The first order of business on your agenda is the old business, which is the approval of the minutes from the meeting of April 25th, 2017. If you wish, you could defer that since Mr. Rojas wasn't here at the last meeting.
Yes, we'll go ahead and defer that. And can we take the signed permit out of order?
That's up to you.
Okay, why don't we do that?
First item then tonight will be Agenda Item Number Two, Plaza America, Chavis Liquor Three. Property address 6066 Southway St., West Miami, Florida. Applicant is requesting a signed permit for a front elevation of the building for 6066 Southway St., channel letters mounted on the exterior facade of the building.
Who would testify, repeat after me. Raise your hand, repeat after me. I solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do. Is there anybody here for Chavis Liquor? Nobody here, so... Do you want to listen to it, or you want to defer?
Any recommendations?
You have my recommendation on the memo, which is by the same guidelines that we gave the last.
So the applicant doesn't need to be here to...
They were requested to be here, yes.
But they don't need to be here?
No.
We can go ahead and take it. Okay, definitely what they're proposing is a lot nicer than the before signage.
Yeah, it's definitely an improvement on that shopping strip. And this is the type of signage that we would like to see throughout the city, something a little bit with more thought to it. The only condition that I would add is that the letters are not mounted on a visible raceway.
Correct.
That the raceway be located behind the wall.
That's part of the memo that I...
Or behind the parapet, okay.
Yes.
With that, I...
Cosmetically, I think it looks by far better than what it's there now. I have no problem with it.
Okay, neither do I. Anybody wishes to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve as recommended by Juan Pena.
Okay, on the motion, Mr. Ann Rio?
Yes.
Mr. Steven Rojas? Yep, you guys say yes? Okay, yes. I mean, you don't have to say it, but you need to speak up. And I vote yes, so it's been approved with the, per the Planning and Zoning Department's recommendation memo.
Okay, now back to the original order, Agenda Item Number One, which is a public hearing Agenda Item for an ordinance of the Mayor and City Commissions of City of West Miami amending the City of West Miami zoning ordinance 282 as amended and adopted zoning map dated November 13th, 2013, changing the zoning for designation of land parcels on Southwest 23rd Street between Southwest 67th Avenue and Southwest 65th Avenue. Article One, Section... Article One, Section Three by changing the zoning classification from R1 to single-family, R1 single-family to R2 duplex family for the properties located at 6507, 6517, 6527, 6537, and 6547, Southwest 23rd Street, and 6506, 6516, 6526, 636, and 6546, Southwest 22nd Street. And from R1 to single-family to R5 off-street parking commercial for the properties located at 6557 and 6567, Southwest 23rd Street, and 6556 and 6566, Southwest 22nd Street. And from R1 single-family to C commercial for the properties located at 6577, Southwest 23rd Street, and 6576, Southwest 22nd Street. And the properties on Southwest 16th Street between Southwest 59th Avenue and Southwest 57th Court, Article One, Section Three by changing the zoning classification from R1 single-family to R2 duplex for the properties located at 5869, 5871, Southwest 16th Street, and 5856, 5866, and 5876, and 5886, Southwest 15th Street. And 5841 and 5826, Southwest 15th Street, from R1 single-family to R4 parks and open spaces and providing for compatibility with the surrounding parcels and providing for uniformity as adopted in the 2016 West Miami Comprehensive Development Plan, which changed the future land use map as recommended by the City Commission, serving as the local planning agency.
Okay, Mr. Pena, I'm aware that this is a public hearing. Personally, I don't know how the rest of the board feels. I would feel a little reluctant to make a determination on this without a full compliment of the board. However, if we can, I would like to hear from our residents, but if you can explain a little bit exactly what it is that the city's proposing for the benefit of our residents. You don't have any visuals, or they don't have a map?
We have maps out in the audience for them to follow.
Okay.
Southwest 23rd Street, as you know, is part of the southeast part of the city, southwest part of the city. And the... Those properties in particular, when they were zoned the first time years ago, they were zoned as resident... The whole block was R1 residential. And as you can see to the north, there's two subsequent parcels that... And the following around the city's perimeter where, in order to protect the commercial from infiltrating into the residential, the city used what's called step-down zoning, which is the higher use in the front, a lower use behind it, and then subsequent lower uses. This is what they ultimately wanted to do around the city, and that's what they did last year when they did the comprehensive plan amendment. Today, this ordinance is here before you to actually change the zoning as per the comp plan changes that were done to the land uses.
Okay.
Same applies to Southwest 16th Street next to Cooper Park. There's different zonings there, which were done back in the early 50s. And there's the corner one, the corner property next to the school, as you can see, is a different shade, which means it's zone duplex where the... For multi-family use, where the other ones are single-family. So in order to, again, provide uniformity, the city elected to change all that area there to multi-family. And then the ones next to, between the church and the school, I mean, between the church and the park, they elected to change those to R4 for future acquisition by the city for park space.
Okay, and when you say multi-family, you're speaking duplex?
Primarily duplex zoning.
All right. The board wish to comment on this, or would you prefer to hear input from the residents first?
It is a public hearing. We notified area residents plus 500 radius feet around them, so anytime you're ready to open the public hearing, to allow them to ask questions or state their statements.
And it was advertised as well? Commercial parking.
Is any portion of Cooper Park as it is right now, is any of... Any portion of that park going to change?
No, no. The purpose is to increase.
It's only the houses next to it that are turning into R...
R4 for future land use and zoning use as parks. In other words, the city would get first option at buying them and being able to demolish them and add additional park space.
We're talking the properties just west of Cooper Park?
Just west of Cooper Park.
Okay.
And can you... I'm sorry, just elaborate a little bit on... Were you talking about 23rd Street? I'm sorry, 22nd Street from R1 single-family to R5 off-street parking?
Yes. If you look at Southwest 66th Avenue on your land use map, that is the barrier that they used in previous land use changes as the avenue to stop the densities of R5 or into the residential area. Only Southwest 23rd Street, you don't have it there, but on the prior map, is only R1. So the difference is that only Southwest 22nd Street and 23rd Street from 65th to 67th is all R1 and directly behind commercial.
Okay, it's all R1 now?
Right.
But it doesn't necessarily mean that R5 only allows off-street parking?
No.
It allows commercial, which has a parking requirement?
Correct.
Okay.
No, it doesn't allow commercial. It allows mixed use, not mixed use, I'm sorry. It allows multi-family use, not commercial. Commercial's only allowed in the front portion of the 67th Avenue corridor.
Okay, because I was reading here, from R1 single-family to R5 off-street parking for commercial. So the R5 is what color on the map? The deep purple?
I gave all mine out. I believe it's purple, yes. Yes, it's... We've got a purple and a blue, deep blues. Commercial prop... Commercial parking and public building.
Correct. R5 is the blue. Purple is multi-family, which will be in our zoning designation, multi-family use.
Okay, I see, okay.
As you can see, the changes are in line with the other properties to the north, all around the perimeter of the city.
Okay, well, I would like, if it's okay with the board, go ahead and open the public hearing, and maybe that'll help us make a determination on this matter. Okay, the public hearing is now open. Anybody that wishes to speak on this item, you're more than welcome to do so at the podium.
Just for the record, Mr. Chairman, are you going to hear this particular case, or are you going to just allow the public to... Excuse me a minute, this is...
Sure.
Are you going to defer the item, or are you just going to listen to the public, or...
Can we... I would like, since a lot of our residents are here and took the time, I would like to hear from them. Can we then have that option to, at the end, if we wish to...
So to you.
Okay, then, I would like to hear from the public. So please, if you can state your... Whoever wishes to speak, state your name and address for the record. Okay, Mr. Rosio? You don't need a...
Yes.
You're going to call them by order?
They have been filling them out.
Okay.
My name is Leon Rosio, 6536 Southwest 22nd Street. Okay, I'm going to start with grievance. All these changes are being done by advertising in Miami Herald, which I am not subscribed to, and by the TV channel, which I don't have. So right now, if I find out anything about the city, it's by the word of mouth. I think the city can do a little better job if at least, in the same way than they put a little piece of paper to tell me that there are going to be fireworks on the 4th of July, to let me know when they're going to be a change. Because the change affect me. When the city, over 20 years ago, by word of mouth, I find out that they're going to change the block that we have in Cora Way to commercial. I find out on the last reading, and I managed to stop the whole thing. Because at that time, they want to make commercial parking lot in the same place, and right now, they're trying to do on 23rd. For me, it was losing the buffer between the single-family home and the rest of the city. I understand that the city has to get some tax base and everything, but if you look at the map, we are, you know, reducing and reducing the single-family home on this city. Right now, in my area, we've got two brand-new buildings, which I don't have nothing to say about it. They've been more than willing to comply any complaint than I have with them. They're going to build another one right in front of my property. They're just going to make a little park supposedly, and then they're going to build another one. So that's going to make that little corner over there, we're going to have probably half of the population of West Miami until they make the ones in A Street. They're going to split it a little bit. Right now, we have a problem with traffic. It's not that much of the building than the regular traffic is coming down through West Miami because the toll on the expressway are getting too high. And I asked the city quite a while ago to make a study on that street, the traffic, because right now, the traffic is getting at 4:30, 5:00 o'clock, right from 67 to... Front of my house, trying to get in 67. It's going to be a matter of time when they're going to have a big accident over there. So my complaint is this. I don't see the necessity to make more duplexes and create more building, a more traffic problem in my area right now. We have a commercial area, then legally, they can fill it out with the buildings. They already raised the amount of floor from four to eight. They have made hundreds of changes, but I don't see the necessity to make this change. I want to leave whatever I got left in my house in peace, not surrendered by a little city. I don't think we can... Our street can't hold it anymore. In fact, I'm going to demand of the city to close 22nd, definitely. When they build the other... The other building is no way in hell than my street can take that much traffic.
Okay, if I may stop you a second. When you mean the other building, not the one that's currently under construction now on 67?
Well, the one in construction right now is between 21st and 20th. You've got another one that is the one finished, which is between 21st and 22nd.
Right.
And then the next one is going to be between 22nd and 23rd.
Well, we haven't, to my knowledge, heard anything, or nothing has been proposed for that. Isn't it 1,000 feet long?
They already bought the... They already bought all the other houses, okay? And they tried to buy my house, and I said, "It's not feasible for you what I'm going to ask for my house." Because right now, on a fixed income, I can't afford to move any places, no matter how much you pay for my house. So the houses are already bought by the company, and the plans under the city. And the only thing that was holding the company to start with that one is the one in A Street and 63rd Avenue, but I don't think they're going to do that right away, so they're going to start on the other one, I would say, by the end of this year, or before the end of this year. So you're going to have a construction right there, 67 and 22nd. So you want to add, besides that, to fill all that with duplexes? How in the world we're going to get in and out of that area? So what I'm trying to say is, if they're going to make any change on the city, I think the best way to do that and avoid a lot of headaches is to invite the people of the city to be present. I know legally, they did it, okay? Because one thing is to do things legal, and the other thing is to do it fair. I would say it's a good amount of people of this city don't have the Miami Herald. Me, myself, I cancel my subscription. After 30 years, about 20 years ago, I decided not to have it anymore. The TV is the same thing. So by law, if they posted there, or they posted over here, they're covered, but that don't mean it's fair. Because they had changed around my houses, they had done change, and when I find out, it's a done deal. There's nothing I can do about it, because I don't have the money to spend it on lawyers. It's not that I complain about that, but I can control this. And I think right now, to make all that area into duplexes is crazy.
Okay, all right.
And that commercial parking space on 23rd, eventually, they're going to have a commercial building on Cora Way, and they're going to have the dump trucks and everything coming to the back, so they're going to be on 23rd. And the people who live across the street, they have a problem. Every morning, when they go out, what they're going to watch, a big wall over there. That's all. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. You want to call them in order?
I don't have a list, so whoever's filled out the form, just step to the mic.
Go right ahead, ma'am.
Just make sure you turn in the form when you finish, ma'am.
My name is Nilda Iglesias.
Excuse me. Anyone that wants to speak, we have a form to... Speaker's form out Whatever. You don't have to do it right now.
My name is Nilda Iglesias, and I live on 2020 Southwest 65th Avenue, and...
Will you get closer to the mic, please?
Yeah. I completely agree with the gentleman on the duplex zoning. Okay, first of all, I have a question. The duplex zoning, you asked him a couple of days, and he said, "Multi-family." Multi-family, could you explain that to me, what multi-family is?
Multi-family is from two to eight units.
Okay, which means that whole area could be made into, like, apartments?
No.
Okay.
Apartment zoning is separate in our zoning code.
Okay, but if you're going to put in one house eight...
No, it's all a matter of the land. Depending on how much land you have, that's what allows you anywhere from two to eight units.
Okay, so you could acquire two, three properties and make it eight units altogether?
If the land allows for that, yes.
If the land allows it, okay. So that would probably be the future that you guys want to do, you know, to... That they want to do there. Okay, just one little thing I want to tell you. One building has come up so far, okay? We have the second one under construction, and they're talking about the third one. Just the dog situation in the whole neighborhood, just the dog situation is getting very serious, okay? I'll go in front of my house, and I'll find three, four poops in one day, okay? So that's one thing just to look at. When the second building comes up and the third one comes up, that's really going to get out of control, okay? Like he said, the traffic situation is bad. The traffic situation is very bad. The construction trucks, I mean, at 7:00 in the morning, and sometimes it's 6:30, and you already have that construction going, and the construction trucks coming and everything. On the other side of 67th Avenue, you can't compare the beauty of that neighborhood to the beauty that you have in the residential area in West Miami, okay? When you get a duplex zone, you get rid of that single-family beauty, okay? You have maybe a 2-2 in the front, and you have a 3-2 in the back, and you have six, eight cars to one duplex, okay? So there, you know, you're losing... You're losing the landscaping in front of the houses. You're getting all these cars parked there, and you're losing the beauty of the city, okay? And every time I see that we have less and less single-family homes, you know, if I bought my house 18 years ago, I didn't expect for something like this to happen. And it's something to take into consideration, you know, that we want to keep the city beautiful, okay? So...
Okay.
And the traffic situation is getting pretty bad.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bares Arreto, 6526 Southwest 20th Street. I'm actually a neighbor of this lovely lady that was just up here. My husband and I, which my husband's sitting in the back corner, bought our property about four years ago, so we're one block in from the current construction site. We bought our property six months before that first apartment building went up. I didn't mind it. It's a pretty building. People seem pretty nice. Before we bought this property, we lived off nine terrace. We lived right where all the duplexes are. I hated it because of all the duplexes. Like she had mentioned, there's tons of cars, there's lots of families. It's rental, so people are going in and out all the time. I saw break-ins left and right, because these are rentals. Whatever, no one really cared. Police cared. The property owners went along with it and just dealt with it with the best they can. When we found this property in the other end of City of West Miami, it was gorgeous. The trees are different. People are different. These are single-family homes. There's a different culture just on the opposite corner of the building. Taking care... Taking rid of all these single-family homes is taking away the culture of the city, and it's taking away its history. My house was built in 54, and my family thinks I'm insane because we bought a house built in 54. But there's a history to that house, just like there's a history to a lot of these people's houses. A lot of the older buildings were torn down. It happens, but there's a history in this city. And by tearing all this history down, even the trees that are planted 20, 30 years ago, that's part of our history. Tearing it down to put all these duplexes in is going to destroy what many that lived here before us fought for and wanted, this little paradise in the middle of this huge city. When I tell people I live in the City of West Miami, 50% of the people are like, "Where's that?" Because they don't know. Which is fine, I'll take it. But the other 50%, we're like, "Wow." We tried to find property there. You can never find property there, because it sells that quickly, because it's so beautiful and sought after. By putting those duplexes in there, you're getting rid of that family mentality. I was always told, when my husband and I were looking for properties, that this is the city people buy properties to start their families in, and this is the city that people buy their property to live out their life. Duplexes, I don't see that happening. I see that driving people like myself and my husband and these single-family homeowners that want that for their family, want that for their future generations.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Just a misconception that I keep hearing. Just because it's changing from R1 to R2 duplex doesn't mean that the present property owner that's there has to do anything. They could live out their life for the next 30 years, and it still remains the same. A single-family house could exist on an R2 lot for 30 years, 40 years. It's just the option of that homeowner, when they elect to sell, that it allows now for any future homeowner or investor to buy the property and use it as a duplex. And also, for the other resident that spoke about the dog situation, between the new building that's already built and the other building that's being built, the developer is installing a park on what used to be Southwest 21st Street. That park is a dog park for their residents, so they don't have to go out into the city as some people are having experience.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
Yeah, you could...
Hi, Henry Piñera. I'm the property owner at 1455 Southwest 58th Avenue, so my property directly faces some of the proposed properties that are being changed to duplexes. I cannot agree more with the young lady that just spoke. Specifically, I bought my house as a starter home. It's where I started my family. I've since moved out of the City of West Miami, and I've moved my parents in... I've since moved out of the City of West Miami and I've moved my parents into that house and they live there now and they, they love the neighborhood, they love the residential aspect of the neighborhood. I'm coming to you not just as a homeowner who is very concerned about my property values drastically dropping by being so close to these duplex facilities, but also as an engineer by trade. I'm in sales now, but that's, don't hold that against me. The, the way that you look at a property is very important in determining whether you can actually do, set up a duplex or not. By the way, I'm in computer engineering, so I'm, I'm not a civil engineer. But if you look at these properties, and I'm, I've only examined the ones that are on Fifteenth and Sixteenth Street, the properties tend to be very narrow properties, about seven thousand square feet roughly. If you take all of them, they're, they're about each seven thousand square feet. For those sites to be zoned and set up as duplexes, the, the houses would have to be set next to each other, one on top of each other with very little to no setbacks. Effectively, you're, you're coming up with, the only feasible way to do this is to make it look almost like one large apartment complex. And that's what's gonna happen if we don't, if we pass this resolution. That's the second point. The third question that I had is, I, I would like to understand what this was, what the, what's behind this wording here? Providing for compatibility with the surrounding parcels and providing for uniformity as adopted in the twenty-sixteen West Miami Comprehensive Development Plan, which changed the future land use map as recommended. I, I don't understand the uniformity. Like, how is this, how, and I'm very focused on the changes to Fifteenth and Sixteenth, Sixteenth Street. How is this uniform with the rest of it? How is this not, I, I just don't see it. I, I don't wanna say it's spot zoning, but...
On the con, on the contrary, sir, spot zoning is what happened in nineteen fifty, where the corner house of Southwest Fifty-ninth Avenue and Southwest Sixteenth Street was changed to duplex on its own with no other parcel on that block. What the city's trying to do in uniformity is allow all the other property owners to have the same privilege that that person had in nineteen fifty.
Okay, so are, are we gonna compound a mistake that was made sixty-seven years ago?
No, sir, because the, the, the facts that you state as far as setbacks and lot coverage does not really apply in the terminology that you, you spoke where it would look like one building with multiple dwellings on it and no setbacks. The setbacks remain the same. The, it's the way they, they built the structure that allows for those setbacks to remain the same.
Okay, so what, how much spacing would exist? And you are a civil engineer by trade, so how much setback do you think realistically would exist between buildings in, for the houses on Fifteenth and Sixteenth?
What's required by code today? Six feet or ten percent of the lot, whichever is greater?
Six feet or ten percent of the lot, that's...
Whichever is greater.
Okay, so...
If you have a seventy-five-foot lot, it would be seven and a half feet. If you have a sixty-foot lot frontage, it would be six feet.
Okay. That, that to me does not seem like enough. And keep in mind, I haven't used all my, my potential space, but that doesn't seem enough to, to give enough separation between the houses to keep everything not from falling on top of each other.
That's what you have today. That's what your house has, that's what all houses in the city have.
Right, and, and I guess I haven't used my, used my lot to the fullest potential and I, I could potentially build up and...
You can, more than likely.
Guys, this is gonna change the character of our neighborhood. This, this is a, a changing from single-family to duplex homes. This is, and, and the duplex homes are not going to be on huge lot sizes. You're creating effectively like micro lots or, and, and the density is gonna go up. My property values are gonna go down. The, the property values of everyone here are gonna go down. That, that is close to this. I mean, that's my piece.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Mr. Chair, Board Members, Mr. City Attorney and Mr. Director, thank you for allowing public commentary today. I think it's vital. When you look at the map and you look at...
Can you stick your name in that for the record? My name's, I'm sorry. My name is Ariel Sagre. I live at Fifty-nine, ten, Southwest Sixteenth Terrace, my beautiful wife and my three kids. When you look at this, there's no intent, there's no purpose behind it. There's no reason why this is being done on the map, it's not disclosed. There's no reason, even in the public hearing notice, which was not available online. I looked today, I tried to find it. The only way I knew about this is because a family member told me this was occurring. This wasn't even available online. We received a certified letter about a month ago, but today's hearing is set after a federal holiday. It's after Memorial Day. The fact that there's people in this room is amazing. It's a testament to how concerned they are about this change. When you go back to this map and even to what's written, it doesn't say why it's being done. No reason for it. Overall, what you're hearing is people saying, this is a single-family home community. We don't want it to be changed. We've already somehow had approval of a major edifice over there and a huge one over there. Maybe it increases the taxable revenue, but it, and I've seen a lot of these things online. When you have the moving come in and the moving says, oh, don't worry, we've done a traffic study. It's not gonna affect traffic. It affects traffic. We've seen the moving come in and they say, you know what? It's not gonna affect anything of our public services, everything's gonna be fine. It absolutely affects our police department, the best police department in the county. It's gonna put a strain. I think overall, you have a unified group of people here the day after Memorial Day. And I think continuing this hearing to allow the full panel, to have the full ability of all the residents to be able to come back on a day maybe after a federal, that's not after a federal holiday, would be, would behoove the, the board. Because I think that when, when you look at this, it doesn't, there's no reason for this. There's no reason why we need to change these things. And when you look at it, maybe in nineteen fifty-four, changing that corner lot was important, but things have changed. This is not the same county that it was in nineteen fifty-four. This is not the same city. In fact, this is a pearl in the city, in the county. When you look at other areas, when you look at other places, people want to come here, as the young lady said. People wanna live here because of our incredible police department, because of the zoning and the code compliance, which is excellent, because of the way it's run. And I think that this doesn't help our city. This is something that's going to not assist us and it's something that's going to decrease our property values at the end of the day. Any way you slice it, a developer can come in here and say, yeah, yeah, we're gonna abide by the setbacks. And then they're gonna ask for a variance. Then they're gonna ask for a special exception. And unless a group of people like this, people rise up and get together and say, no, we're not gonna agree to it, they'll get it. So we're here early in the process, we think the full board should consider this and if it goes to the general committee, the General City Commission, the whole commission should hear this and we don't agree. I think overall, you can see we don't agree. In section twelve twenty-one of the West Miami Code, it says that meeting, entitled Meetings, Records of the Public, Public Participation, it says, "All meetings of the local planning agency shall be public meetings and all agency records shall be public records. The local planning agency shall encourage public participation." I think Mr. Chair is, is correct. I think this should not be voted on today. I think the general, the entire board should hear it and I think that another day should be set so that you can have more participation from a key issue as this. Because what's gonna happen is, this is just one step. Once these things get rezoned, as the other young lady said, you're gonna go from two to maybe eight. Then they're gonna come in later on, somebody wants to do an apartment building over there by the trailer park. Somebody wants to go and build something over there. And at some point, the residents have to stand up and say, no, we, we vote, we pay taxes and we don't agree with this. And I think it's excellent that we should not have this voted on today, but preserve it for the future.
Okay, thank you. And just for your information and the public's information, we're just a board of recommendation to the City Commission. Anything we hear here in this board eventually goes in front of the City Commission and they're the ones that have the ultimate say as far as approving or denying any, any application that we may hear. Again, we're just a recommendation board, so there is another step that, that will involve public participation as well. I just wanted to throw that out there, that this is not the end of the end, in other words.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir. Okay?
Good evening. My name is Tania Rosio. I live at sixty-five thirty-six Southwest Twenty-second Street. For those of you that don't know me, I have lived in the City of West Miami for fifty-one years in the same house. I served there for six years, I was commissioner for four. I've been involved, heavily involved in this city since the mid-eighties. So, I have accumulated a certain feeling for this city. And I have been up here debating, arguing, fighting, whatever you wanna call it, for the welfare of this city. I have always stood up here and represented the forgotten corner. And I say it with pride. We have always been forgotten. And, and I'll tell you one simple thing. When we had the ramps on the, on the sidewalks, one day I went to take my mother in a wheelchair before she passed away and I found that in my city, in my section, in my forgotten corner, we didn't have ramps. Why? Because there was not enough money, so the other part of West Miami got the ramps, but the forgotten corner didn't. And like that, I can tell you a number of things. What you're trying to do with our little section is incorrect. I know it's legal, I know it's progress. You know, we have put up with these buildings. And I know that we need these buildings. Otherwise, this city would just go topsy-turvy. I don't wanna be Dade County, I wanna be West Miami. I'm very proud. But these changes that you're trying to do as far as the R-two, that's not right. And I have a correction and a little bit of information. I have a lot of information, some that I can't reveal today. And I'm gonna wait for a better day and a better time and when more members are present so they can hear what I have to tell them. You say that there are two, but they don't have to sell them, this is, you know, an option. Well, let me tell you, sir. Twenty-third and Twenty-second Street has been addressed in writing by a realtor trying to buy these properties. So it's real. It's not something that might happen in the future. No, they're out there.
Ms. Rosio, I never said that it might happen in the future. I said that the present property owner does not have to sell and convert it into a duplex.
Exactly, but, but what I want to tell you, it's a reality. They're coming out there and they're addressing the people. And if this goes through, a lot of people are gonna sell. I'm not, I'm gonna go from my house to the cemetery. I have determined that I am not gonna lose my house. If my house is not a house, it's home. For fifty-one years, I have lived there. My husband and I have lived there. There's nowhere else we can go. My neighbor in the back, she's here too, she's lived there all her life. Where is she going to go? Mrs. Beckham in the back, she's lived there, she's one of the original owners. Where are we going to go? Nowhere. They're just waiting for us to keel over so that they can take over their properties. This is wrong, this is totally wrong. Please, I'm begging you. Deep into it, do some, some research, simple research, it's the police department. Go and get the public records of all the calls that have to be made to other areas of West Miami which are completely full of duplexes. You'd be amazed the number of calls that they get because they're not property owners, they're tenants, they don't care. And then the property owners are going to rent these properties so that they can make some money out of it. They don't care who they rented to. They don't do background searches like of the apartment buildings. And that's not what we want, not in our corner anyway. Leave it alone, let it be. We have lived there and we, we selected West Miami just for that. We wanted to, to raise our family here, have children and raise our family. And I've raised, we've raised our two daughters and now we're raising our grandchildren. This is a beautiful city. Please, don't fix what's not broken. It's, it's a nice area. You don't get the police service that you get anywhere in Dade County. And I'm gonna tell you one thing and, and then I'm gonna stop. Our son was killed in Afghanistan.
Sorry to hear that.
Yesterday, thank you, yesterday, like every single year for six years, two of your police officers come and they put flowers under my American flag that flies in front of my house. I'm gonna ask you, where? Where in Miami, where in Florida, or in South Florida, do you get that treatment? Nowhere. We're a big family, please don't destroy the beauty that we have here. The hometown beauty that we have here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Rosio.
My name is Sabo Guzman, sixty-five...
Can you speak up a little bit?
Sorry, I'm losing my voice. Sabo Guzman, sixty-five oh-six, Southwest Twenty-second Street. In contrast to my neighbor, I've only been a resident for two months. And this is very concerning. I've already had offers for the house, a month into buying it, to turn it into a duplex. So, I'm not gonna change anything here, but I will ask this. Could we please get a resolved map of the area, one that lists the streets clearly and one that makes a comparison between the existing map that we have up on the website to show a contrast of where we are and where we're going to be? Also, color coding for the map seems a little strange between the blues. These are things that I pick up just because of my trade, but it's very confusing and it's not clear between the blues and the map. Also, I would ask that we consider having more rec and open spaces if we are going to move forward with this density. There is, where we're saying there is a potential space for a park, for a dog park, it's listed right now as commercial parking. So, that's confusing. If it is going to be an open rec or dog park, could we note it on there?
Well, I believe the incorrect...
Yeah, the only, the only opens park, the open space park that's on the notice is for, between Cooper Park and the church on Southwest Sixteenth Street.
I see.
The dog park that I spoke of is on private property within, between the two buildings that are being built. The one that's built and the one that's being built.
For the use of the residence of those two buildings, not open to the public?
To the public.
Got it. My house is a corner house, it's right next adjacent to an alleyway that seems to be the preferred dog park for the moment. So, moving forward, there's just some considerations that need to be taken and the city, I, I mean, I would appreciate it if we see a clear plan of what it entails moving forward with this plan. Whether we change the zoning or not seems to be a bigger picture, but we're not, we're not talking about the why. As you mentioned, why are we doing this, you know? And what's the plan if we do move forward? I don't, I don't have a clear understanding of what's gonna be done about the density, the traffic, the pedestrians. They're all around the area. They're all around the area all the time. And it is very concerning to know that the majority of my neighbors are old and retired and they could sell their houses and those houses next to me will become duplexes. That's a huge concern. I don't want to live next to a duplex. I didn't buy the house to live next to a duplex. So these are things that need to be taken into consideration because changing the zoning for the whole block means that we're all going to be in danger of having a duplex next to us.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Penn, before we go, continue with the public hearing. And that was Ms. Guzman, correct, Guzman? Uh, I was thinking the same thing when I saw this, Juan. To be honest with you, I'm a little confused. I would have liked to see something with the actual listed addresses, uh, something with a little more clarity. I don't know if, um, this.
No, I, I agree.
Ms. Rio, and, um, it, it just seems like a lot too much and, and, um, I mean, th- this is also new to us. In fairness to the board members, we're also obviously residents of West Miami and share your concerns and experience your concerns and live your, your life here as well because it affects us too. And I was not aware of this either as far as, um, it coming before the board. I don't subscribe to the Herald either, uh, so, or I get satellites, so I don't get the cable TV channel. But I just feel, Mr. Penn, that really, um, I, I'm kind of overwhelmed. And I think for the first time in like six years that I've been on this board, I feel that way. But for some reason, I just feel a little overwhelmed now with this, uh, item before us. And I would really like to see a little more clarity, uh, as far as the zoning map.
Remember, what you're looking at is not a zoning map. It's a land use map.
Or, I'm sorry, the land use map?
And since there are so many different land uses that the city has, in fact, we, the, they have changed the, in the process of the comp plan, they did change the colors several times to broadly show what, what areas were West Miami, what areas were the county, what areas were commercial, what areas were duplex. I can understand in the printing quality regarding the moderate density and the commercial parking and the other color of public buildings, they're very similar as far as the blue and purple concerned. Perhaps we could call the university and have them change those colors to something brighter or diff- more different from each other.
And on the map, the low density, that's not proposed, uh, which is like a yellowy color?
Well, because the low density is what exists there now.
Which is single family?
Correct.
Okay.
Right now, that whole, uh, purple color on Twenty-third Street, between Twenty-third and Twenty-Second Street, which is the, the area of concern, uh, most of the residents here from R-two to, from R-one to R-two is, right now, if you would look at it on the zoning map, it is yellow. Because it is, that's the present zoning. This is a future land use map. This would be what the city intended it to be in the future.
Does any board member have any comments before we continue?
Well, no, I, I definitely would like to see a little bit more clarity on the map, maybe showing her what is there now and, and what is proposed. Also, on these, um, on the zoning, I'm, I'm still, and I'm sorry, I'm still very confused. When you say R-five off-street parking for commercial, does that mean that the allowed use in there is parking, a parking garage? Or does it mean that it's retail with parking?
No, just parking gar- parking or parking garage?
So it could be for all intents and purposes, a surface parking lot?
That's correct.
And that, when I go back to the land use map, that is represented in the.
The blue.
Deep purple?
No, the deep blue.
The, one of the blues, the commercial parking.
Right, right next adjacent to the red. The blue adjacent to the red.
But on the map, which blue is that?
If I can show her, the, the only one, I guess by process of elimination would be.
It's the third, the third blue that you see on your, on your index.
Only here. I see purple, purple, and purple. And then these, these three blues are the same. Which blue is that? Is this commercial parking?
What you're saying?
No, there's several blues.
Again, I think it would be very beneficial, Juan, to.
Maybe a blow up of this?
A, a blow up, different colors that really contrast.
Like, for example, I want to see what this, this is R-five.
Right. There's a line there. That's us.
Okay.
This is purple, which is the moderate density.
Yes.
Which is the duplex. This to the, to the north is what's there now.
Right, that's not changing. What we're changing now is this.
What's proposed to be changed.
Right. Is that block and then the area here?
Same thing here. This will be moderate density. This will be the public buildings, uh, which is the church. And then the two between, this is right now, yellow.
Okay.
Between, yellow.
Okay.
Okay, that makes a little more sense, huh?
Would the church be bought out?
So, but, right now, these two are purple. These two are moderate density. Behind the existing buildings?
I believe that, yeah, they are moderate.
These are the lower scale ones behind the tall building, behind the eight stories.
But this one's already that building going in. So this one's already.
Mr. Rojas, ask a question again, please.
Uh, okay.
Yes, sir. My, my question was, um, in reference to the area where Cooper Park, uh, for that change, is there proposed parking? I, I notice when I drive by sometimes, um, the vehicles that are stationed there, uh, with time, um, you know, damage the grass and the surrounding area. Uh, so I was wondering if there's any proposed parking, uh, for that area?
At the present time, no. Uh, in the future, if one, one of these houses were to go up for sale, the city at that point could look into knocking it down like we did behind us and turning it into a parking lot instead of park space.
And, and secondly, I just wanted to comment on, uh, the residents here. You know, thank you for your comments. You know, I, I too am a resident here and share many of the concerns you do here, so that will be taken into consideration, uh, your comments. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rojas. Mr. Rosio?
The old Rosio, sixty-five thirty-six Twenty-Second Street. Okay, when they make that change on, uh, Coraway, business cannot have more than five employees and they have to have certain amount of parking. So why is the reason now that the, the lots on the back going to be able to be converted into parking space? When, if they do that, it's because they're going to change the business on Coraway. Because the status on those buildings, they cannot build up and they cannot have more than five person and they have to be, you know, they have to have certain amount of, uh, green and, and, and I know that perfectly because I thought that for, for quite a long time when they did that. Now they come out with, uh, with the idea of doing parking space on the back.
No, sir. No, sir. What's being proposed in the back is, uh, duplex, just like the, the rest of the block.
And parking, right?
No, duplex.
Okay. Another thing, when they say that, uh, you build the duplexes you want it or not, let's, let's play this game, okay? Because Mr. Penn doesn't live in the city anymore. Maybe he worries about this anymore when they used to live in the city, but he doesn't live in the city.
Mr. Rosio, please, uh, that's a personal insult.
But that's, that's the truth.
That's a personal insult. I, 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 as much as you.
Don't interrupt me. I didn't interrupt you.
No, but you insulted me.
No, no, I'm not insulting you.
As much as you've lived here, I've worked here for thirty-six years and I don't appreciate that comment from you.
But you don't live in the city.
But I don't appreciate that comment from you.
You don't appreciate, but it's the truth.
No, I don't appreciate your comment. That's an insult.
That, that, the truth is.
Before you, before you continue, uh, I've been here twenty-two years and I know that Juan was here way before me.
I know, and I know him since he was, uh, but what I mean is.
Blood, sweat, and tears, working for the city.
They don't care about the, the problem like we do because we have to live in it. You, you get a car, live out of the city, and that's not the same thing.
That would, that would be your opinion and you're entitled to it.
When they're talking about, if you do a duplexes or not, let's, let's play the game. You know, they are companies that buy a property, they build a duplex, they move certain people in that duplex, and in ten days, everybody going to have a for sale sign on the, on the property. Because they're going to destroy the property if they don't do it. Okay? And that's what I'm scared of.
But remember, it's, it's only one block.
No, but it, it, it.
In that area.
This is, and, I know, the whole block, but we, when I. It's, it's our block. And now, now the thing is, they buy one property, they already, they, they already came to me, so before you people know that they're going to be, that change, they already know.
Change is no good.
Okay, they already know. You don't know, but they already know. Now they buy one, just one, they do it, they move the right people for, for the purpose in that property, and in ten days, everybody going to have a for sale sign there. And the property value going to go down. And then they're going to buy it cheap and they're going to continue doing it. And they, what you're going to do, ten years from now, you're going to have another meeting because you're going to add more space over there for, for duplexes and do the same game? Let's leave the things in the way they are. We, you know, it, it's not needed. I mean, if they make a mistake twenty years ago, thirty years ago, fifty years ago, that they make an area duplexed, and now you want to do it for the, for the other people to have the, the chance, we don't need this chance. We bought the house as a single family home and that's the way we want it. If you, you know, if this is thing, it is continuing, you know, people going to get mad, we're going to get together, we're going to hire a, a lawyer, we're going to spend ten years in, in court, back and forth, I'm going to, you know, before, if they make a decision, I'm going to be there, then gone. But that's what is going to happen. It's no reason to do this. It's really no reason.
All right, thank, thank you, Mr. Rosio. I appreciate your passion, but please, uh, no personal attacks. Mr. Penn has been a, a great employee and a great asset to our city. In case any other residents do not know, Mr. Penn, um, he, he's been a great asset to our city and.
The people in that area have no decision on, on our life. They have been changed without any of us. And that's not fair.
All right, thank you, Mr. Rosio.
Okay, Jorge Vasquez, sixty-five zero-seven Southwest Twenty-third Street. Been living in the same house for the last thirty-five years. Okay, my daughters were born there, were raised there. I don't want to go nowhere. Where am I going to go? I know Peña, she was a young man. We were both, we were all were young thirty-five years ago. All right. He might not live here, but he live here most of the part of the time. And, uh, I, I just wondering, it being in my mind, back of my mind, who's behind all this? Who's trying to change this and for, for what reason? For what reason? There's something behind it. It don't smell fishy around here. The buildings getting, first came the buildings, uh, one, now we got a second one, which is almost ready. Then I don't know what you guys planning to do with all the, the other space there on Twenty-third Street between Twenty-second. I think it's coming up with another, another building, right? That's what it's going to be, another building, right? I'm a pet-loving person myself. Okay, I got dogs, I've been, always had dogs. Rosio's too. I'm not against dogs, not at all, any pets at all. Okay, but the, one building, the density of the dogs and the people, the pedestrian traffic is being increased a lot, a lot. We got, still we got young people there buy houses like my, got my backdoor neighbor just bought the house, yes, I've got, got the other one here, bought about four months, six months. Because people that, people buying, but some other people selling because it's become, seem come, something's coming that is, it's not right for the city. It's not right, all right? First time when the, the, they pass all the commercial, uh, thing, uh, they put in the Herald and everything, which most of the resident didn't know that any past, all right? Well, we, we, we got the buildings now, right? But we can enforce some of the, all the, all the, no, all the, all the rules of the, that should be, be followed, you know? Like, was one person here says, fine, though the doggy bags, I have to call the, the city because I leave right with, right next with, uh, the alley there right away. There were bags all over, all over there. I picked them up a couple of weeks, then the other weeks it was the same thing. So I have to call the city, all of a sudden stop. Well, now here and there, you see a bag, okay? In the bottom of the tree, somewhere on the car. And it should be some, uh, I don't know if there's, all the buildings going to come, it's going to be a, a, you know, per friendly, uh, building. Because I, I don't know where we're going to, we're going to enough so much dogs, right? It's no, it's not only a dog for payment. Some might have two, three dogs. Because I, I know a guy has got three dogs himself. And I would ask, okay, the, the sidewalks are narrow, really narrow. Why the white socks, I mean, the, the sidewalks, all right? And I would not like to see that zone duplexes because it's going to be a big mess. We have enough density with the buildings. Know how about, I, I was making account, one building, it hold those like ten square blocks. We got about sixteen houses, one whole square block, right? There's a hundred and sixty apartments there. It takes from my house from Twenty-third Street all the way to thirteen square blocks, right? That's the whole density we got people in one building. All with dogs, I don't think if you, if you don't have dogs, I don't think you'll be able to rent there. The park is going to be a joke, okay? You're going to go to park, but people don't want to go to small park and have thirty, forty dogs there. They want to go out and walk, okay? And you see a couple of peoples, young people with strollers, kids coming, the people, people coming with the dogs, they have to pull over, let the guys, you know? It's, 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 it's getting into the, 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 the quality of the life, of the city, which always have been, okay? To, yeah, understand progress and all this, like you said, well, but it's nothing enough. We've got, already got the commercial thing going on there, so it been passed. Now we're going to go another, another, another meeting for the, for, for sentence of the be, the, the building, where they already bought the houses. They said we're going to make a, a park, a little park there, now they want to make some parking, a park for the dog park. They was talking between the church, there's no church now. Most of the people don't even know what was church there. So what, he's talking to, a better map, we need a better map. Some map is such, I don't know, very confusing, all right? The density, like I told you, will be ten square blocks for each buildings. So it's a lot of people, it's a lot of people. Then we're going to have more buildings, more duplexes. You're with being single family homes, all right? We raise our kids there. We need a better city, we need a good city. Don't spoil it, all right? Don't spoil it. I'm asking you, please, all right?
Okay, thank you, sir, Mr. Vasquez. I think, um.
This is very short, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Hi, good evening. My name is Martha Gonzalez. I live at sixty-five three-six Southwest Twenty-third Street. Regarding the, the issue with the map, I'm going to agree with everything my neighbors have said so far. But I'm a little confused on a personal note because I received the notification for tonight's meeting, but my address doesn't show up on the, the entire listing. And, um, I don't understand how I show up here as a blue, which is. And I don't understand how I show up here as a blue, which is commercial parking, so I'm confused, very confused with how this is affecting me and what this map is. I don't know where I am here. Because I'm not on that listed of affected addresses, yet I got the notification.
If you're not on the list, that would mean that your property is not one to slated or proposed to have the zoning changed. However, you are in close proximity, therefore you were notified of the hearing.
Okay. So it was for the notification purposes?
Correct. Because you're in, within, is it five hundred feet, Mr. Penn? You're within five hundred feet of a property that is being proposed to have the zoning changed.
Okay. So the zoning change, well, how come, if I look at this map correctly, but I'm not sure, I don't understand why my property would show up as commercial parking.
What is your address, ma'am?
6536 Southwest 23rd Street.
6536 23rd Street?
Right. That's why I think that the map really needs to be redone, I mean, detailed.
You are one of the ones that would be...
But I'm not on that list, so...
In the ordinance?
In fact, my other, my...
Because yours is not changing.
Right, okay, but I don't, if I look at this map, it says "commercial parking", so I don't understand what that means.
That's what yours is right now, existing.
Okay. So what does that mean?
It means that up to, commercial parking can exist on your property.
So if somebody wanted to come by and buy the house to build a parking lot?
For the commercial businesses in the front.
That's what it is now?
That's correct.
And there's no change?
No.
So I can go.
It's up to you. Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, we'll let Ms. Rosio go, and then I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing.
One, one last thing, and correct me if I'm wrong, you know, you said just one block, and I know you really didn't mean it.
I apologize if it sounded...
No, you didn't mean it, but, but I see why, one block. And I'm going to agree with the young man that came up and talked about the space. Do you know that every lot on that block are approximately sixty-eight by a hundred and sixty-four? There's no other, no other lots in West Miami that size. You can look everywhere, and is that correct?
Well, aside from certain areas, you're correct.
Okay, but I'm correct. So I can see the reasoning why this is premium land, because duplexes would fit in this property very well. So, again, I ask you, please, take it into consideration, and I am going to make sure that I come back, because I'm gonna continue fighting from my forgotten corner. Thank you very much for listening to me.
Thank you, Ms. Rosio. Okay, with, go right ahead.
Alicia Alonso, 5949 Southwest 16 Terrace. I have been in the city since nineteen sixty-four. I was five years old. I don't want anything in the city to change anymore. I have no idea who lives in those buildings. If they're single men, single women with a dog, go live at Brickell. I've walked behind Brickell, all those buildings, with my three nieces, two nieces and a nephew and my brother. We were the only one with children. Everybody else was on a cellphone and their dog. A little, what do you call it, the little bags they have, that they can afford the bags, instead of using the regular bags, they're all over picking up, whatever you call that. I just can't see myself doing that. So if you're so robot, living there, the doggy going cellphone, you walking, go live over at Brickell. That's the way I look at it. I don't want West Miami to change. I love the way it is. And Mr. Peña, you're a great employee, you know? And I agree with all my neighbors, what they said, they don't want change. I don't want change. That's it, just, I don't, no, my name is Alicia, no. No change, no, everything's no. No.
How do you spell that? Oh, no.
No more change.
Good evening.
Go ahead, sir.
Enrique Villaronga, 6527 Southwest 23rd Street, my aunt. And just, just wanted to dwell on the changes that are being proposed. I guess we ask ourselves, and it's, like you said, one block, it's actually two blocks, 22nd and 23rd Street. You're really affecting approximately twenty, twenty homeowners. And, you know, I ask each of us, no matter where you live, imagine if you built or lived in your home and invested your equity in that home, and all of a sudden, the local commission board decided to change the entire city block into a high-density duplex, triplex. You wouldn't feel very good about having your values of your homes drop, having more traffic. And at the end of the day, you take pride in the house that you live in, because you want to fix it up and make it a very nice house, and keep the values of the property neighborhood well. And unfortunately, when you become into a rental majority, which is what this would actually cause, that doesn't happen. And I think everybody on this board agrees that we want the best for the city of West Miami, and we want to keep the values up, and, and that will mean more taxes, obviously, unfortunately, but that's good for the city. The second thing is also, one of the questions I have is, why not just maintain the zoning of R1, and just leave or affect the commercial proposed buildings? We don't need to change the entire city block of 22nd and 23rd, and the twenty-some odd residents here. I think that if you just change the future third building that's gonna go up, and put the proposed in a green area in the wall, I think you're making the majority of West Miami very happy, if they're keeping their neighborhoods quasi, with the exception of a couple. And I ask if that's something that could be considered as an option, as a different option, as opposed to changing the entire city block of 23rd Street and 22nd Street, and affecting all these residents here.
In fact...
Go ahead. I'm sorry, go ahead, Ms. Peña.
In fact, that was what I was gonna suggest to the board, leaving the R1s as R1s. And when the city commission did it, they did it as a benefit to the homeowner. If the homeowner doesn't want it, they don't care, it's not up to them to change. They really have no interest in the rest of the block being R2.
I wanna raise probably that.
So if you wanna keep it as R1, you'll keep it as R1. And it'll be left out of the ordinance.
So that's another option, I was asking if it could be considered. And then the last thing, finally, and I know we're out of time, but it would be, what would be the next step? Because I believe there was a next meeting scheduled for next week?
Well, that's up to the board. If they decide that they're gonna listen to, decide on the item, then that meeting will take place. If they're not, if they're not gonna listen to the item, then it's up to our attorney to decide which way we head.
Okay. All right, thank you, sir.
There was a second meeting, because this is just the first hearing?
No, this is your first and only hearing.
The second meeting is the commission meeting?
The city commission.
Okay.
Sorry, I wanna get clarification, because I just realized something, that the other properties, not the ones by Cooper Park, they abut, I guess, higher-end developments, right?
Correct.
And the idea is that there is, the motivation for this is that there's, that duplexes offer a step down in terms of the zoning, and that's the logic behind it. This goes to my original question that I asked, which is, what is driving this? That I never really got an answer with respect to the Cooper Park area. What is the step down? What is the logic for rezoning the properties that are around Cooper Park? I have yet to hear one, and I'd like to get some justification, it's even in the, I alluded to it here, but in, in the ordinance, but what is the justification for changing those properties?
Uniformity.
Uniformity for what? What else is there around there?
There's an R2 duplex, like I explained, on the corner of 59th and 16th, that exists today.
Okay.
So the uniformity, if you have that higher zoning on that corner, the uniformity would be to allow that block to prevent any other R1 further to the north to become a duplex. And that's the buffer that you use to buffer for the residential area.
Okay.
A step-down buffer.
So 59th and 16th, that's the one that...
That's a duplex on the corner.
Okay. I was wondering why that particular address was left out, and effectively...
It already is a duplex.
Yeah, so, again, we're fixing a problem, we're fixing a problem that was created fifty years, or sixty-seven years ago, by making it a bigger problem for the residents today.
Again, if the residents that live there now don't want it, they don't have to do it. It all depends on, you know, what their requests are.
Right. What about, but see, they're gonna get an incentive to sell their homes, and then an incentive for more money. The developer's gonna develop these duplexes, which they'll sell to somebody, which will rent. It's gonna drive, there's money behind this that will motivate them to change those properties. So it will happen. If the zoning changes, this will happen. Everybody acknowledges in this room that if the zoning changes, this will happen. It's not, and it will happen, I guarantee you, within the next five years. Because there's enough money within South Florida that it's gonna happen. So I, this will impact our, the neighbors that are a block away, like me. This is, our property values are gonna go down in price. Our neighborhood, I bought across the park, thinking I've got this wonderful, single-family residential neighborhood, and now there's duplexes and there's one lot. How, I've got a better solution. Why not figure out when that one lot, the 5916 lot that was called out, is gonna be purchased, or is gonna be sold, and put in an offer to buy it, and then rezone it back to single family? Why can't the city do that? Fix the problem the other way?
I would prefer, to be honest with you, for the city to purchase it, demolish it, and expand the park, is what I would...
I like that, I like that.
...to happen, to be honest with you.
Are you running for mayor?
That's the, no, sir. That is the intent of changing, mostly like Mr. Penn testified earlier this evening, that one of the intentions of the city is to purchase that property, but the zoning does not allow for it currently to become a park, or a parking lot for the park.
Right, but once you guys purchase it, boom, you change the zoning, and that's it.
This is purchased, the Baranada and Alhambra, that corner lot, right there, the neighbors of the park for the citizens.
Okay. I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing. I don't mean not allow you to speak, but I think we have heard enough on this issue. What I would like, and again, the board can also speak, like Ms. Rio said earlier, one of our residents mentioned, Mr. Penn, I would like to see something a little more clear, like a before and after map, land use map, and just allow us a little time that we can look into this, and, and take it from there, and basically defer it to another meeting. I don't know how the board feels, and also to have a full board, a complement of the board. And I feel really bad for Mr. Rojas, because today is his first official meeting here, he's alternate. I appreciate you coming over tonight, because if not, we would have not had a quorum, and we would have had, had just to defer the meeting. But I think it's kind of unfair for Mr. Rojas to come in and, and absorb all this.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I'm actually very pleased to be here today, this evening, and if the board allows it to, I would like to submit my vote. I think I'm, I've heard enough and seen enough to make a decision on it.
You're welcome to make, to make a motion. If you wanna make a motion.
I would like, before, before we even go there, the gentleman proposed perhaps making an amendment to the land usage, and I was intrigued by that, because I was actually thinking along the same lines, well, what if, you know, the business is facing 67th Avenue, you know, perhaps make the amendment there? And so, and listening to Ms. Alice, or Ms. No, Mrs. No.
I got it.
Yeah. I was listening.
Not me, and no, and no.
So I was wondering if there was any wiggle room for amendments that the residents would be willing to listen to, and perhaps find a resolution to it? All the arguments I've heard thus far have been contrary to the proposed, you know, item. So, and I open, I ask it openly, is there, is that something that could be worked out in changing the layout of it? So that it just, and I hate to prolong this, but is there, is there, is there support in changing it so that the zoning duplex would pertain only to the, the commercial businesses facing 67th Avenue, and not the entire block?
Again, sir, the public hearing is closed, it's only for the board...
Yes, we had closed the...
To discuss.
The meeting.
Oh, I just, I thought you had asked a question if there was some agreement.
Oh, okay, because you're the one that suggested that. I think, Mr. Rojas, it's really up to the city staff as far as changes and all that. They certainly can discuss it with the residents and propose something for us, the board, to give our yea or nay on. Mr. Penn, I can correct me if I'm wrong, but...
But again, I believe Mr. Rojas is wanting to render his decision on this item tonight. The, the ordinance, if you propose to, to provide a, a motion, can read that, you know, the portion of the ordinance that you're in agreement with, and striking the, the other portion of the ordinance that the residents are not in agreement with. That, that can be done, and it would take me a few minutes to just change it a little bit, so that you could understand what is being proposed, if you wanna go ahead and take it up tonight. If not, then, like Mr. Paz was saying, we could come back at a later date with a, with a different ordinance, if that's what the, the board and, and the consultation with the rest of the people from FIU that had input into this ordinance is discussed.
Actually, I would be agreeable to that, Mr. Penn, and, and definitely, if you wanna give us some guidance on that, what are the specific blocks or block?
Well, basically, the ordinance would read, as stated before, the ordinance of the mayor and city commission of the city of West Miami amending the city of West Miami zoning ordinance 282 as amended, the adopted zoning map dated November 13, 2013, changing the zoning and designation for parcels on Southwest 23rd Street and Southwest 67th Avenue, and Southwest 65th Avenue, Article 1, Section 3, by changing the zoning classification from R1, single-family, to R5, off-street family, for off-street parking for commercial. The property's at 6557, 6567, Southwest 23rd Street, and the property's at 6556 and 6566, Southwest 22nd Street. And from R1 to commercial for the properties located at 6577, Southwest 23rd Street, and the properties, and the property at 6576, Southwest 22nd Street. And then, when you go down to 16th Street, it would say, changing the zoning classification from the properties at 5841, Southwest 16th Street, and 5826, Southwest 16th Street, 15th Street, from R1 family to R4 parks and open spaces and providing for compatibility. This would leave the existing residential R1 properties all as R1, as they are today.
Okay.
The ones that are owned and occupied now by the residents that are here today.
Okay. I would be, in lieu of the testimony from the residents, and I kind of feel and share their concerns about that, I would be agreeable to that, leaving the R1 zoning in place...
I would be agreeable to that, leaving the R-one zoning in place, and, and like you mentioned, allow for these other properties... Only the specific properties specified. That you, you read those in the record. That's correct. Those are the ones you read for the record. Okay, we can put that as a motion then, and, and take a vote on that? Sure. Okay, Ms. Rio, you have anything to add? Is it clear?
No, honesty, I think I need a little bit more time to digest what the city is trying to do, and come to a happy medium with what the residents wanna do. And in my mind, I wanna clarify what is there now, so at this point, I am confused. I would like to see what is there now, and what we're proposing to do before I render a, a vote. So I'm not comfortable with just reading it into the record, and I'd rather discuss it one more time. And also for the benefit of a full board.
Would you like to make a motion, or somebody make a motion?
I agree with Ms. Rio, I think...
I'm sorry, will you speak a little bit?
I'm sorry, I, I agree with Ms. Rio, I would like to have more time to look, look over the amendment, and perhaps clarify the map, and be able to just to look at all the facts before voting.
Okay. It's up to you. Ms. Rio, would you wish to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to continue the item until next month's meeting. That would be Tuesday.
Yeah, we have to give a, a certain date. And would you care to add, well, we don't need to add to clarify, and... No. You, you know what, what we would like, though, Ms. Vazquez. That's correct, that would be June twenty-seventh.
June twenty-seventh.
Okay, there was a motion on the table, and I'm gonna go ahead and second that motion. On the motion, Mr. Rojas?
Yes.
Ms. Rio?
Yes.
And I, I vote yes. So is everybody clear, we're gonna make a nicer-looking map, and we'll come back hopefully with more board members on June twenty-seventh. And, Mr. Vazquez, maybe you would like to, maybe the ones you read in the record, which are, is no longer valid anymore, but maybe present an alternate... Correct. Excluding those properties that you read when we come back? Sure. Can you, alright? Alright, any more comments? Is, that is the last item on the agenda. That is the lightest last item on your agenda tonight. Okay, I thank you all for, for coming by, I know it takes a lot of effort and a lot of time, obviously, to come here and speak, and we, we really appreciate hearing from our residents, a lot of times these meetings, there's really nobody out there. So it's really, makes it more interesting for us to see our residents, that we are, in essence, also, we don't work for you, because we are volunteers, but we are, we are residents as well. So I really thank you for taking the time to come over and speak. With that being said, this meeting is now adjourned. The city of West Miami Planning and Zoning Board meeting of May thirtieth, two thousand seventeen is now adjourned. It is nine-ten P.M. for the record. Thank you. Alright, thank you. I don't, I don't think we are allowed to do that, we have to remain partial as well.